So we're going to start off with a pledge of allegiance.
Select Board meeting, January 3rd, 2022. The C A O is the board.
Pledge allegiance.
And invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. We're also going to start with a moment of silence. We have lost two individuals. Francis.
Aaron Hart.
Aaron Hart. Aaron Hart.
He is a past building inspector, apparently a post office employee and a mail courier at one time. And the other gentleman.
He might have been on the finance committee, too.
Oh, thank you. And then the other one will be Art Boyce-Mogg, who was Mr. Channel 15 here for how many years, Carl?
Oh, I'd say at least 20.
Yes.
I was on the cable commission in 1987.
Cable commission in 1987.
Yeah. Yeah, he was on cable TV committees, too, for ad hoc boards.
All right, let's have a moment of silence. All right, so it's Board of Selectment meeting. Today is January 3rd. It is our secretary, Mr. Didi, whatever his name is again. The clerk, I'm sorry, the clerk. And Mr. Fox is on Zoom, but we can't hear him, so he is useless. But that's fine. We're used to that. Mr. Simon is also on Zoom. All right. So public comment at 6 o'clock. Anyone for public comment? Please start in the front row and then we'll work our way back. Something, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you. Happy New Year to you, too. Okay, anyone on Zoom have public comment? I have to stare at the album out of the screen. Doug, do you see anyone?
I do not.
Okay, no one's leaving. All right, thank you. All right, it's close to 6:05, so at 6:05, we have shared CONCON and CPC duties for a single position. Young lady, come on up if you don't mind. And I believe the other gentleman is online, if you made it. Yep, there he is.
There he is.
Good evening, all.
Oh, great, it works. Good evening, how are you?
I'm well, I'm well. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Hi, David.
Hey, how are you? I'd love to be there with you guys. Feeling a little under the weather tonight, so I thought I'd keep it safe.
We appreciate that. Great, so Jeannie, how are you?
I'm good, thank you, yourself?
I am well. So we went to your meeting the other day, I think I did, right?
Yes, you did, December 15th.
Sure.
Pretty sure it was, yeah.
Yep, and the thought behind it was to try to combine the conservation opening we have and then to create something for the, what is it again?
Um, community preservation committee.
Thank you. We were looking at 10 hours on your side of your, about 10, I'm sorry. It's about $10,000, which is about eight hours.
Correct.
Is what we came out with.
Okay.
So you gave us some verbiage that we have.
Yes, I did. I sent the board an email that just had the qualifications. That was a rough draft.
That you guys are looking for.
Correct.
We also have the one from conservation, the original one that Dennis Clark was under.
Uh, yes.
So we would like to do is we'll look at both of those and try to morph something together and then bring it back to your board.
Great.
To go from there. That's going to take a, unfortunately, it's still going to take a week or so to get that all rolling.
Okay.
We're simply going to send it out to the, Carl, which attorney is that?
Labor counsel.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Hey, Carl, do you want to, um, do you want to get together and try and meld one job position out of these two documents? Work together on that, or do you have somebody?
Yeah, we do need to do that with her because if, you know, you got three or four pages on one and you got two or three pages in this one, and a lot of the things are going to be the same skill sets overlapping. So I, and labor counsel can do that. So what we probably could do is, um, you know, obviously, we have to make sure that the reporting responsibility is differentiated so that there's still an operational report to both boards and a direct oversight through, um, our board is the personnel board, and that's generally under the C A O. So all of that can be wordsmithed by labor counsel. We just need to make sure that we reflect the important things CPC wants, because David, the other document that already went out was already developed by, you know, you and other people. So that one, we're already comfortable with that one. It's just a matter of taking this one and trying to reflect the overlapping skill sets and anything that's of particular interest so that they could then create some additional essential functions under the formatted job descriptions, which have to meet the ADA guidelines.
Right, right. And I think, you know, I went through the other day and just had them side by side and tried to note down a couple of things where that the responsibilities are the same. There's a couple of different nuances to them, but, you know, again, it's liaising with boards, keeping up to date on policies, posting information to town websites and keeping websites up to speed. So a lot of it is redundant.
Right, I agree with you.
So do you want to set up time to sit down, or?
So what we could do, I mean, I don't know what your situation, you know, my schedule's been kind of crazy with other events going on, and, um, I think it would be good if we could really, um, take the one that exists now with the CONCON and then you and, um, myself and Jeannie could just look at the other salient points on the other document, pull those out and then have them integrated into the other version and then produce a new, a new net version.
Carl, I have obviously copies of both. I think the only one I have from the conservation is in PDF. Is it possible to get it in Word so that we could start working on a draft?
I only got, I think I got the same thing that you got from her, so I don't have it in any other format. But the way that, but the way that Jeannie sent it to me, and, you know, when I looked at it, I'm sure that was, I'm sure that was documents that existed in other, um, CPCs and other people that. On the other one, yeah, I can, I can have that sent to you. But we can have our office send you what we have, and if you can't edit it, then I would have to have the labor attorney send it to you.
Okay, I mean, I figure if we can at least mock up some sort of draft to get it over to them to save them some time and make sure we're getting the points we want.
Yeah, she's, she's really good at turning things around, too.
Okay.
So the important, the important thing everybody needs to agree on would be it'd be the same hourly rate range that we've already established for the CONCON position. And we'd be adding on eight hours and it would be 32 hours. It'd be a 32-hour position. So the question is, is Jane, uh, do you have consensus with contributing from your admin account, which does carry these dollars as a standalone warrant article each year on an annual basis?
Yes, we do have that. We, it is a warrant article every year for the administrative fund.
Right, and what this would do is this would allow you not to use all of those funds. It would end up using probably, what, let's see, if this is near, if it's near about 10,000 and you've got about 16, then this would be about two-thirds of that, which would leave you dollars to do the other things that you need to do with the CPC admin, which I think is like pay the dues to that CPC nonprofit that you belong to, as well as, um, you know, any supplies, um, any particular eligible services that are under the D O R guidelines that a CPC committee can undertake from human funds versus from funds that they have to take when there's an appropriation for a project. So, so that's, that would be the way that it breaks out.
Do they also pay appraisals out of that admin?
They can, but again, that's why we want to be careful about not overusing it. But you do need to have some level of dollars coming out of it so that we can make this a more, um, you know, more attractive position to get that pool of candidates that everyone is committed to getting.
Carl, to that line of thought, so when Joe was at CPC meeting, one of the things that came up was making this possibly a benefited position through the town?
Well, it already is, but David, by virtue of, by virtue of being a position with the conservation commission that is already 24 hours, it already is a benefited position. It's already eligible for health insurance.
Okay.
And then it's eligible for, um, it's eligible for vacation leave prorated. So, you know, like Dennis used to get prorated vacation leave, he wouldn't use it. So now what would happen is the proration would go from being what used to be the equivalent of a three-day week to a four-day.
Good.
It gets proportionalized. So yes, sir, it is, it is already a benefited position. So that, that was the thing that we also wanted to make, um, clear to the finance committee, and I know that we have, um, uh, the vice chairman on the board of the FINCOM on here, Terry, and I'm not sure if, uh, if we have Sheila, but clearly, uh, there's no other additional indirect cost for OPEB and things like that, because we're already just taking an existing benefited position and increasing the hours.
Fantastic.
That will be part of the, uh, you know, any new, uh, once the job description is created and the selectmen adopt it, then we would update the advertising for the position, sir.
Correct. Well, I, as you know, we're eager to get somebody on board over from a conservation standpoint. I mean, I think we've been doing as well as we can in the position we are with Dennis working the hours that he's working, but having somebody there with more hours certainly benefits the town. Uh, yeah, I'd like to move as quickly as we can on this, and if you want to send over that doc, I'll start working on it with, with Jeannie, and then we could all sit down together and green light it and send it over. That'd be great.
Well, you and I will follow up with that draft with Joe, and then, you know, then we'll work it through the attorney so we can bring it back to a future board meeting.
Perfect.
Okay, I can make, I can make that request after the meeting is over, sir, to the attorney.
Thanks.
And I would CC you and Jean on that email.
Excellent.
Okay.
Yeah, so does the board need anything, any questions for, for us?
No, I don't think so. We'll just get that document to you. You seem to have some time on your hands to, to go through it, which we appreciate very much. I don't see anyone meeting in person for a little while right now. So if you can get that, only then we can schedule a Zoom meeting for you three to, uh, go over it and we'll go from there.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I mean, we pretty much, David, you already gave the input on the other one, so really just taking Jeannie's stuff and incorporating into it, so.
Okay, all right. I'm going to go get ready for my next meeting.
All right, thank you, Jeannie.
Have a good evening, sir.
Anything for us?
No, I just want to make sure that, um, in light of the, the job probably focusing more on the conservation, that we do make sure that CPC's needs are met.
Oh, absolutely.
In, in light.
That's not going to be forgotten about.
Okay, in light of the conversation that we've, that we have had, going through the, what do we have?
You've got a good list.
19 responsibilities here. Obviously, I would think that there's probably three that are very important, and those are having to do with the, um, the accountant part of it. Um, the, the, uh, the, the applications, and keeping in mind that applications aren't like flooding in, however.
No, no, but when they come in, they come in.
You know, in, in light of a few things that have happened recently, making sure that they are submitted properly on time and so we don't have to keep going back and forth. So those are probably the, probably the two most important things that I think the CPC needs, that, that needs.
Desperately needs.
Yes, absolutely.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good night, all.
Questions, Mr. Mogul?
No. Congratulations on your election as chair.
Why, thank you.
Yeah. Enjoy the ride.
By default, probably.
Still a ride.
I'm trying, I'm learning.
You're doing great.
Thank you, guys.
You really are. We appreciate it. That wasn't sarcastic, no. All right, next up is payables. Acknowledged payable warrant 2216 dated 12/21/21 in the amount of $249,713.94. And then, uh, open session minutes dated 12/20/21.
Now, I guess I'll make the motion to approve minute of 12/21.
I guess I'll second that, because we seem to be shorthanded tonight.
Thumbs up or thumbs down, Russ?
Yeah. Mr. Fox, okay, thank you.
Thumbs up, he says aye.
He said aye, so.
And he's, he's, he's me now. Oh, yes, we can.
What'd you do?
I, I was working with the computer, sir.
Oh, God, so someone helped you, thank you. All right, so all those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Thank you.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Welcome to the meeting, Russ. Would you like to say anything more about the, uh, the, um, moment of silence? I know you probably knew those folks a lot better than I did.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, I would, because, uh, Fran Airhart, uh, was the chairman of the finance committee for many years. Uh, he was instrumental in, uh, because he was chairman during Proposition 2 and 1/2, and implementing that was very difficult for the town of Southwick. And, uh, it was through his leadership, I think, uh, we came through. He was also chairman of the school building committee, uh, that built our new high school in the 70s that you and I both attended, Mr. Didi. Uh, he was a building inspector, but he was one dedicated man to the town of Southwick. So, uh, we, we've lost a great one. And, and just to go on to Art Boyce, no, Mr. Chairman, he was Mr. Southwick, a true gentleman, absolute true gentleman. Uh, he brought Channel 15 to life. Uh, you'd see Art filming morning, noon, and night at parades, at the functions. Uh, again, we lost another great individual, so I, I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about both of those gentlemen.
Thank you. All right. Up next, I have accept AED and relocated equipment gift from Park and Rec for Wally Park facility. Accept.
I'll make the motion to, to gladly accept the AED equipment for Wally Park. Russ Fox will second.
There you go. All right, all those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. Doug Mogul, aye. And if I could just add, because I think that's, I remember back when I was, when my daughter was young and we talked about this and when AEDs were first starting to get a little bit more economical to have. God forbid that that device is ever needed, but if it is and it's useful, especially with use sports, and that's when those things can be extremely beneficial. And so to have one at Wally Park is a huge asset. I know there's one at the playground at Powder Mill as well. That's a huge donation and a huge win for the town to have that, um, for those that are taking part in activities up at the park. That's a huge deal. So congratulations to all that were involved in, in securing that grant and having that thing installed up there.
Jeannie is here from Park and Rec.
As part of being on Park and Rec, um, there was a presentation the other day from Keds Foundation, and they came in and it was, you know, we are working on having it installed, and it is quite an expense. So that was nice of them to donate the, um, the device to the park. A second AED, which is going to be used in the town beach, we asked to apply and they said, can you give it to us? So that is going to be on beach and it's portable, so we're working on, uh, getting that gifted as well, which is wonderful. And I know that they commented on using, um, recently over the summer in Westfield, an AED, excuse me, that Keds Foundation had donated at Wally Park, and it saved a gentleman's life. So there was some kind of testament, and also we're having. Granted that it's there, and also we just have to figure out some particulars on how we're going to, you know, alert someone to use it, blah, 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 but it is, it is a great. Hopefully, we don't have to use it, but it is something that's.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you so much. That's great.
It is, it's wonderful news. Okay, up next, accept $6,500. Says it's a grant, from Save Southwick for Planning Board Master Plan Update Project. So I need a motion to accept.
Russ Fox will make that motion, Mr. Chairman. I will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. Doug Mogul, aye.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it, and that'll be used like we had said talked about before, whether it's their mailings or, you know, and hopefully we can, um, I'll do my best to make sure we got a printout of where it was used. So, so don't, you don't have to ask me in a year and I'll look at you dumbfounded. You know, we'll get that as it's used and get it to you so you know. Thank you. Okay, that's all I have there. You got that. I'm not sure if you're looking there. Okay, well, I have this here, and, all right, so now we're on to new business. Mr. Steinhardt, anything for new business?
Uh, not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, this, a request for transfer reserve fund, would that fall into new business?
Well, yeah, you, as your prerogative, if it did come in, it is under an amended agenda. So it is, yeah, it is something you can rightfully do under your amended agenda for this evening's meeting.
Okay.
Want a little color?
Yeah, I don't have it.
I mean, literally, a little background?
Yeah, that's, exactly.
Zoning by law has a wireless communication overlay district.
Yes.
And there was an application for a cell phone tower, um, located off of Liberty Lane that was denied by the planning board, which is currently in litigation with Verizon.
Correct.
Part of the outcome of that spurred discussion amongst the planning board, and if there's anyone here from the planning board, feel free to chime in, or if I'm going off board, but there was discussion around, having a discussion around revising that bylaw to remove that particular parcel from the zoning overlay map. Reason being is there was significant opposition from residents that, around that proposed location, that weren't there when the wireless communication overlay district first came in.
Correct.
Was also suggested that we look at, that the planning board look at alternative locations for a tower to serve that area, that general area, without being as potentially obtrusive as, uh, the proposed location.
Yes.
Uh, there was a couple of folks that had come forth and offered up their parcel to be potentially considered to go in front of town meeting for a zoning bylaw amendment to remove the, the Liberty Lane site and add other potential sites.
Correct.
Um, and the planning board has taken that under advisement, but what they would like to do is to have a consultant come and basically do an RF study of the general area and provide real data as to where a proposed tower, or where a tower, if proposed, would actually work and provide the coverage needed in that area, and keeping with the bylaw of minimizing the overall number of towers installed in town.
Correct.
So the planning board had searched, uh, Mr. Goddard and, and the board had searched to find a consultant who was not beholden to a cell phone company.
Yep.
To try and find, uh, someone who would be willing to take, take that task on. So they have a quote and, um, a resume from a company that would do that work. It's not inexpensive, um, I think it's about nine grand.
Yep.
But it will yield some valuable data to the planning board, rather than just saying, oh, this parcel will work, or this, you know, this guy wants to be in the wireless communication overlay district. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. So, and avoid having multiple trips to town meeting. This would give you that foundational data to provide to the planning board and then potentially to town meeting to say, okay, this is a suitable location for a, uh, a parcel that could hold a tower dimensionally and radio signal integrity-wise that would work, um, for that area and still minimize the overall number of towers installed in town. So I think it's a worthwhile, uh, thing to do. Obviously, it needs a reserve transfer of about nine grand, um, or so, uh, in order to do that.
One of the things that we're having to look at also is that with the 5G technology coming out, that is coming at times where we're not going to require such high goals. It's going to be more spot areas, as well profiles, as we get to what that technology.
Yeah, there wasn't a lot of them.
Correct, and unfortunately, the, the regulations around the 5G stuff is even different than the current towers we have. There's a lot less local oversight and control on the, on the smaller towers. I've been, um, I'm sure we'll have another training at MMA again this year, but for the last three years, every year, there's a, a little class that they offer for, um, zoning and planning by the mass municipal. And what they, the cell phone companies basically have done to the telecommunications act in order to be able to construct the 5G stuff, the smaller cells, but a lot more of them, um, it's pretty interesting. And the amount of local control, like, you know, we have a special permit process that you have to follow. It's not a requirement under five, under, with the 5G stuff, um, and really can't install. The timelines are very different, the review periods are very different. It's not, it's not really under local control. But that being said, the 4G and the LT stuff is still going to work cell to cell, even to backhaul a lot of the 5G traffic. So you're still going to need those towers, um, and it, I know, I think I saw Terry was on the line, too, and Terry was on, on the planning board when this first came in. The wireless communication overlay district, the whole point of that was to minimize the number of towers in town. And it wasn't the first, this was not the first cell tower that the planning board rejected. Um, I, I can remember at least one other that they, they didn't feel was additive to cell phone coverage, so they just denied it. This one, the applicant has, you know, brought suit against the, the town and the planning board. And I think this study might be beneficial to the town, well, definitely will be beneficial to the town, but also from an angle of, if Verizon is successful in court, they can just get specific performance, which basically is to get their tower, right? That's not necessarily the best thing for anybody. Nobody wants Verizon to put a tower there based on the feedback, or a lot of people don't want Verizon to put a tower there based on the feedback from that public hearing. So a winning court for Verizon is a win. They get their tower where no one really wants it. No one's going to be really thrilled with Verizon, obviously, you know. So if there, if this study could identify alternative sites nearby, that might be a way to negotiate or work with Verizon to come back with an alternative proposal that puts a tower in a better place. Right now, there's not a lot of other places in the wireless communication overlay district that you could put a tower that would provide equivalent coverage in that area. So this might provide an avenue to do that. So, yeah, that was the 10-minute, two-minute story of why we're here with that.
No, understood, I honestly thought.
I learned a lot from the chairman of the planning board. Brevity's not his strong suit, even.
Yeah, and I honestly thought this would have been in front of us a month ago. When this was voted on, I assumed someone would come forward asking us to do that, and it just never seemed to happen until now. So, um, Mr. Fox, anything?
Uh, no, I think it's probably a good idea to be a little proactive on this, and, uh, I would make a motion to support the transfer.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. Mogul, aye.
Now, mind you, if they change everything, it still has to go to town meeting for a vote, correct?
Absolutely, it's a zone change, two-thirds. No, this doesn't change anything with anything other than it gives data to the planning board to, to potentially propose a zoning bylaw change, or even a change of the map is a zoning bylaw change.
Correct. Yep.
How do you do this? Russell Fox, cut.
Thank you. Well, she can come in in a couple of days and sign that. Okay. The thing we, okay, so that was all I had. That should have been where it wasn't. Now it is. So under new business, I have Rock on Water. Basically, we will bring that up in another week or so, once we get some verbiage from our attorney on how to deal with that matter moving forward. Anything else for new business? Mr. Fox?
No, sir.
Mr. Mogul?
No, sir.
No, I have no new business. Okay, old business. Okay, old business. North Pond Violator, waiting for fishing game. I believe we're still doing that. Appointments at Town Board's commissions, we're waiting on that. Town hall roof design, that process is moving along.
Yep, Mr. Chairman. You, uh, yourself as well as members of the Finance Committee. Have received an updated document based upon your recent meeting with the design firm. Created an updated uh, document with the different cost estimates. Uh, for both the roofing and the HVAC uh, improvements that have to be undertaken. And they will be coming in at your meeting next week at five thirty. To go over that document and make an updated presentation to you. On the outcome of that, you would then be authorizing them. To finalize the bid specifications and prepare for bidding documents to go out. So that we could uh, secure. You know, valid, updated, um, you know, dollar amounts for both the budget process and the town meeting legislative process. Because as you, this process started last May at town meeting. And they authorized the funds for this design and permitting for this project. So we now need to. Fulfill that commitment that was authorized and bring this back before them. To secure the authorizations and undertake this project.
Thank you. Mr. Mogan, are you okay with five thirty? It's a little tight for you for next week?
Is what it is, as they say.
Okay. Understood. And Mr. Fox, is there nothing else to do over there? Okay. Sewer system rates and IMA update. That's still on there. We did, we, Westfield has done what they've done, correct, Carl?
Yeah, you, you, and you voted last week to update the amendment that uh. Ben has approved to form, so he's just finalizing some document to put before you.
Okay. Thank you.
You've already voted? I mean, you just need to sign it. You already voted your ability to sign it.
Okay. LLP renewal with Southfield.
We have a meeting this week with the new first selection Friday morning, I believe.
Thank you. Concom coordinator, we already discussed that. Boarding committee procedure. Where are we with that?
Waiting to hear from the Attorney General.
There you go. Okay, COA transport software and FRTA support. So that process is for the F five twenty twenty five budget. Is where that's going to come into play. It's four hundred and fifty, I think four hundred and fiftieth dollars, Carl, is that correct?
About, was it four hundred thirty two, four hundred thirty five? It's. It's diminished to the grand scheme of things, Mr. Chairman. So I think it's not an issue for the board to uh. Move on that issue tonight and take it out of um, old business and move it forward and vote on it so that we can. Allow both the Council on Aging Director and the Regional Transit Authority Director. At Franklin Regional that we are a member of to go forward. And start um, giving that tool to our Council on Aging for transportation track.
Understood. So I need a motion to approve this.
Russ Fox will make the motion to approve.
Doug Mogan will second.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Okay. Here are my agendas to make sure I didn't miss anything in here. So I'm seeing for old business. Mr. Steinhardt, do you have any old business?
Uh, no, we just went over the, the stuff I wanted to talk about. We're good.
Mr. Fox?
No, sir.
Mr. Mogan?
Oh, just want to wish everybody a happy new year.
Thank you. Back action. That I can remember. Um, will there be an executive session, Carl?
Uh, yeah, that's up to the chairman. Obviously there, you do have a package to. Start going over the stuff in it. So that, but um. Um, that would be something that the uh, the board would. Just do, it does roll call in and go into another room and go from there.
We could bring you guys back on.
Uh, yeah, you could bring us back on or just have us phone in.
We can bring it back.
Oh, no, we want to see you. All right then, folks, that's the end of today's meeting. We're going to go in executive session, not to reconvene. We appreciate your time tonight. I am going to read that whole spiel. Okay, thank you. All right, a motion to go in executive session, third chapter MGL thirty A, S twenty one, two and three, chapter two, one, four, section one, B. And CMR twenty point oh three dash one. For the occasion of the regarding litigation and threatened litigation. Strategy for dispatch unit not union collective bargaining. Executive session, MGL chapter thirty A, S twenty one, two and three, chapter two, one, four, section one, B. And CMR twenty nine point oh three, one, B exemption number two. Move to go in executive session to conduct the collective bargaining session with non-union personnel into not reconvening in open session. Move to go in executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel into not reconvening in open session. If there are open meetings, may. Action of the body and not reconvene in open session. Move to go in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and that the chair moved to go into executive session to conduct strategy. Sessions of preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel into not reconvening in open session. Move to go in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and that the chair declare that an open meeting may have a. Effect on litigation position and the body into not reconvene in open session. A person shall have the right against unreasonable substantial and serious interference with their privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right in connection with the need to award damages. Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
All right, folks, that is it and have a good night.
Do you want me just to hit leave?